I'd like to call to order the November 22 meeting of Shelby Township Planning Commission, and I'll ask the Secretary to call the rule, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Repone is absent, Mr. LaRae is absent, Mr. Grot?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item is approve of the agenda.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, approval of the minutes from the October 25 meeting.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So this evening, we've got, we have three site plans before us. The first site plan, number 21-37, Allen Hall, for Clean Hub Car Wash. Okay, so, yeah, why don't you, what are you requesting of this body? And I'll need your name and your address, and then when you're done speaking, sign in, please.
Great. My name is Allen Hall, I'm with API from Waterford, Michigan, and we're representing, I'm the architect for Clean Hub Car Wash. It's gonna, proposed to be at 12535 23 Mile Road. And do you have a graphic that shows the site plan, or?
What do you, what do you got for us?
Okay, okay.
I mean, we, we have what was presented in our packets, but if you have something you can share?
No, that's, that's fine, we can just, if you go into the packet, you can look at the...
If you want to start selling car washes, you can knock yourself out.
So Clean Hub Car Wash is a subscription-based car wash, and it's, it's a high-speed, high-efficiency car wash, and we have, Nick is from the owner, and he can represent the car wash. Why don't you say a little bit about the car wash before we start talking about it?
Sure, absolutely. Hi, Nick Harwood, you need my address as well?
Yes.
4800 North Handstone Road, Parma, Michigan, that's where I live. So Clean Hub Car Wash, I'm currently the general manager slash, you know, assistant developer for it. So what Clean Hub Car Wash is, is it's a modern, new, sleek car wash. You look at a lot of the car washes in Metro Detroit, they're old, they're rugged, you know, there's nothing too great about them. Here, we're high efficiency, we're subscription-based, and so with the subscription-based cars come in, they have a tag that we put in the vehicle, they pull up automatically reads, they wash their vehicles as many times they want, so it improves traffic flow. So you get cars in and out as quick as possible, as well as putting up good product. You know, our building design is modern, something you're not going to see around here, you know, everyone uses old decrepit buildings. With us, everything's brand spanking new, the building materials are nice, you know, we're not trucking, you know, bottom-of-the-barrel materials, and so it's a good design, you know, we have all the free vacuums that we use, and with our process procedure that we use at our current location in Sterling Heights, we make sure that it's clean, so it's, you know, sometimes you get these car washes, they have trash all over the ground, so with ours, we keep it up and nice.
Not Shelby Township, not if Julie's got anything to do with it, but go ahead.
Exactly, it's Shelby Township, not 8 Mile, I get it. So it's a very good thing for this area, you know, obviously with Shelby Township, you want to have a good reputation, a nice car wash, and so, you know, we do things differently. All the chemicals that we use, it's all biodegradable chemistry, so you don't have to worry about environmental issues, which is nice. We're putting in the top-of-the-line recycling for our water, we're gonna recycle about 75% of the water at our car wash, so you have less environmental impact as well. So it's nice for a green future as well. I don't know if you have any other questions about the car wash?
Okay, thank you.
If you do, let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the car wash itself, the property is about 1.33 acres, so it's a pretty small property, and the car wash itself is about 5,000 square feet down there. Because we're dealing with cars, the site has to be designed with the rotation and the path of cars, right, so there's a certain distance I have to deal with. The site is very narrow, so one of the things that's, one of the issues is that we're looking for to get a variance from the ZBA for a side yard or a front yard setback off of Corridor Street. 23 Mile Road, we meet the 25-foot setback there, but on Corridor Street, that one there, we want to ask for a 14-foot 9-inch variance for that. As you can see, if the, if you look at sheet L1 on your packet, it's the landscape plan, you can kind of see where those parking spaces are that are in that setback. There's also a 34-foot easement along Corridor Street also, which is for utilities, and we've spoken with the DPW about what we're going to do to have paved areas a curb, and the vacuums have foundations that go in the ground. So they're, they're in agreement, I don't know, is anybody from DPW here today?
No.
No, okay, so they're in agreement that we assign a waiver, that would be our responsibility in case there's any kind of maintenance that has to happen in the utility, or for the utility easement, that we would be at our cost to repair that. The foundations for the booms will be prefabricated smooth foundations, so we can pull them out and put them back in in case necessary for that. So they, we actually helped them with some forms, that, what that would look like, we've done this in other communities to do that, they seem to be very receptive of that, so. You can see that we have three stack lanes that are going into the car wash, two of which, they're all gated, by the way, so when you first go in, the first two, they're closest to the building, are, they can be read by readers, or they can be attended by a person that's there. The far lane is for mentors only, and that just, you speed right through that, okay? So they have a reader that picks up a sticker on the car, that obviously sees who you are, and you just go right on in, so there's not a lot of time to be waiting around. Right now, you're currently getting the license plate viewer right now?
Yeah, we're looking into license plate reader technology, so that would make it even faster.
So each, each lane would have that technology with the license plate reader, but what it does, it stops anybody from trying to figure out what they want, the plan's already been established, and it's running through, so the speed of it is really the key to getting people in and out of here, so. See anything we can see in here? The materials, I did bring some materials with me, everything's non-destructable, this is cement board, it looks like wood, that'll be on the building, and if you see the color ring rings there. And also the metal siding is kind of a silvery, silvery look. So we have this, and then there's split face, is going to be the... around the sides of the building, I'm sorry, it'll be these two right here, so it'll be in complementary colors. So it's going to have a, a modern, kind of a darker, more masculine look, but real, real nice, it's a, we have, like you said, he mentioned, we have one in Sterling Heights, which is similar, we're changing a little bit of a few things because we're trying to solve some issues on over there. That one only has two lanes, this one has three, and that's helping that circulation that they're looking at, so. So saying that, do we have any questions?
Okay, we'll, we'll get, have a seat, second, we'll get to you in a minute.
Sure.
I'll turn to the planner, Nick, you did this review?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you give us, share your thoughts, please.
Thank you. So this is, property is zoned light manufacturing, car washes, auto washes are permitted uses in the light manufacturing zoning district, so there's no issue there, there's no special land use requirement, and during the preliminary review, we resolved the majority of regulation area disputes and issues that rose. There was only one minor issue that still remains, which I will address soon. In regard to the master plan, this area is designated as transportation industrial. As you can imagine, car washes fit within that transportation industrial kind of designation, it's an auto-related use, serves autos primarily, and that's perfect for the 23 Mile Corridor right there. The surrounding properties are all light manufacturing zone two, similar types of uses to what is being proposed here. With that being said, I'll go right into my review comments. As Mr. Hall said, there's two front yard setbacks this property has to adhere to. The one along 23 Mile Road is satisfied by the proposal. Along Corridor Drive, there's a 25-foot setback required for buildings and parking from the common usage line, or the easement line for Corridor Drive. They will require a variance for the parking along this eastern part of their property. The planning commission may offer a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, if they like to offer a favorable recommendation for this variance, or they could all pass it on with no recommendations, let the zoning board of appeals see if this is a reasonable request. As far as this property goes, a tree permit will be required to remove any of the regulated trees on site. I know there's a few at the front of the site, and along the western side there. On the topic of trees, the site plan also identifies posts or bowlers on the west property line, within that existing tree line. Is the plan to remove that tree line, or are those posts just there coincidentally? And then, the hours of operation of the business are posed at 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The applicant has noted they would also like to allow the lights on site to be utilized from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, they request that by the planning commission. With the industrial zoning district, this is, you know, not a major issue at all, especially with the surrounding land uses, they're not residential in nature, so there shouldn't be any nuisance spreading from that timeframe. From Section 3.34 and Section 5.27, the use of the split-faced concrete block and the metal siding requires planning commissioner approval. It is fairly attractively designed, it breaks up the monotony of a split-faced concrete wall pretty well in there. The only, you know, blank wall that remains on the building is the west elevation, which will face away from Corridor Drive, obviously. Other than that, the remaining comments are from the Department of Public Works, the Mr. Hall is aware that the easements may require those vacuum units be removed at the applicant's expense, which they have worked out with heart in public works already. Other than that, everything else can be handled during engineering phase, should this property The parking on the east property line is for the vacuum units, the majority of those parking spots you see on there are for the vacuum.
Vacuum, are the vacuum units there? I mean, accessible?
Majority of those are vacuum unit accessible, there are spots for employees and...
All right, or any, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Harwood, earlier you said you have a new, modern, and a sleek car wash, right? I have been...
Come up, come up, hang on, come up.
I have been to the one in Sterling Heights on Van Dyke, I have a question, I'm looking at your rendering, sent us, I think you have north and south elevations mislabeled, but that's a minor issue. I'm looking at the elevations and the rendering you have, and I believe you've got too much, my personal opinion, too much split-faced block. Like to see some brick integrated in here, if possible, to give your building even a newer, sleeker look than what you have now. I'm, I'm not against the siding, but again, if you could integrate some kind of stone or brick, that would give an even a more modern appearance, so I think you can accomplish all three of those goals and go beyond what you want, if you address that and put a little brick in there. Instead of the, break up the monotony, especially on the west side, not, maybe not all the way back, but where you're facing at 23 Mile Road and Corridor, I'd like to see some more brick integrated. Just my opinion, so, thank you.
How much questions?
I do, I have... I have a question. Your site concept, on 23 Mile Road, I noticed you have some landscaping out front, and then there's some smaller bushes, and shrubs on the, you know, facing 23 Mile Road, but then on your plans, on, on the plans, you don't show the shrubs out front, it just has sod. Can't be on there?
Sod, I believe, will be the underlying ground cover, and the shrub will be on top of it.
What she's pointing out is there's a... Specifically, there, it looks like, yeah, there's a little...
Yes.
East corner.
Yes, yes, so you'll see there's also some trees left of, well, this way. That was our intention. Some road trees is correct. That's the reason why you don't see those trees. Right now, this is what, is there, right now, we're not showing the bushes and things, I just want to make sure that everybody's fine, we can put them in, but I want to make sure DPW is fine with it all.
What's your, say again, you're asking?
Yes, so if you'd like to have the bushes in, absolutely, if...
You're telling me the DPW's telling you.
Haven't discussed the trees with the DPW, but, I mean, it's understandable that they would not want those within that easement, especially if they're going to tear it up. The tree front requirements allows the street trees to be supplemented elsewhere. So if they can't be made along the tree frontage because of an easement, utility lines, or it can be substituted elsewhere on the site, whether it's in the parking lot or around the edges of...
Sure that the required amount of trees and landscaping is on the property, even though shown on there. Swear, then we'll make sure. Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the number of trees is on the landscape plan, just the planting area. It's just not as... I think it looks nicer, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, quick question, is, is this a franchise, you have other locations?
Um, it's not a franchise, it's privately owned, there's only one other location right now, and it's in Sterling Heights, there are two other locations we're working at right now that we're doing.
This is one, are the other one just as nice?
It's, it's just as nice, because we're on the record, right?
It is.
Now, there are some, I mean, it has technology changes, we're changing that, too, so we're trying to take the best of all the worlds and kind of post it in, so you'll have the more modern one, but they're both excellent.
You're not concerned about the traffic on 23 Mile Road getting in and out?
So 23 Mile Road is very busy, as we all know, so, but the lot is already existing, and so to combat that, we put the drive all the way down Corridor Street as far as we can get it, what we can really do to combat that. We also have the lots, the stack lanes, again, will keep the cars on the site. There was a question about the, the parking space of the vacuum booms. One thing that this, this car wash does, it handles mass washing, so if there's a wedding going through and they all want the cars washed, they can come and get a lot washed, back in at the same time. So they're not waiting in line, they're just pulling these cars, so.
Your neighbors, who, who is, who's your neighbor here? Popeye, new restaurant going in there?
The one, just to be clear, the one that's right here, this neighbor?
Right, right.
So he's a, that's a, like a store, has some materials, he actually approached us to... Well, there's somebody there now, but there's, they're, they're back, back here more, there's a little building out here in front.
A house?
Yeah, which is their kind of like staging area, but the stuff's in the very back there.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Hearing not entertained a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve site plan number 21-37, Allen Hall Architectural Planners Incorporated, Clean Hub Car Wash, 12535 23 Mile Road, north side of 23 Mile Road, east of M53 Freeway, car wash, subject to the approval of the necessary variance and submission of seven sets of final site plans, addressing all planning commission members and site plan review comments.
It's important.
A move by Turner, support by Moore, any questions on the motion, hearing not. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Grot?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
I'm sure it was yes. Good luck. Okay, next item, site plan number 21-35, Noe Bals, Baez? For Taco Local.
My name is Noe Baez, I'm at 11738 Hyawatha in Shelby Township, I have my answer here Pete to answer any questions. I'm the owner of Taco Local Restaurant. Pandemic has caused us to realize that we have to change the way we do business. One of the biggest changes that we have to make is we have to add outdoor dining, that's why I'm here tonight. We want to build an outdoor dining environment, people pass by, they would say, "Wow, we got to come and eat here," or, "Wow, this looks like a good place to work, I'm going to go in and apply for a job." Or when the families driving north on Van Dyke, they turn around, they see our building, the kids in the backseat will say, "Mom, Dad, stop, we want to eat here." Now, to get that kind of reaction from passersby, my outside dining has to have three things. Number one, it's got to be visible. Number two, it has to be attractive, has to turn people's heads. Number three, it has to be appealing, has to appeal to the emotions, so they will come in and have a margarita, or have an enchilada dinner, or they will come in and apply for a job. In doing my research to see what kind of outside dining I wanted to have, I looked at several downtowns to see what they had. Discovered one thing that I want to share with you today, I think it will help you in making your decision tonight, and maybe in future decisions, when you have people like me come up here asking you for approval. I'm going to go through some slides and to show you just what I'm talking about, okay? I'm going to begin with downtown Shelby. This is the outdoor dining area for, you can see it right in here. This is VAST, their outdoor dining is right behind these Arbe vida. This is a restaurant next to VAST, the former Cucina di Vino, and lettuce, and their outdoor dining is right behind those brick enclosures and the plants there. This is Miguel's Cantina, now, it's not in downtown Shelby, but it's at 23 and Shainer, and you can see their outdoor dining behind these Arbe vida. Let's go to Royal Oak, Bondados Tacos, there's their outdoor dining. Tom's Oyster Bar, there's their outdoor dining, and you can see the colors of the buildings, very colorful. Now we go to Rochester, Bakehouse 46, you see their outdoor dining there, right in the front. Falls on Main Street Rochester, there's their outdoor dining. Birmingham, Bellula Wine Bar and Bistro, outdoor dining. Beachside Seafood Birmingham, outdoor dining, beautiful. Now, what I noticed is the three components these things have in common is what I want, visible, they're attractive, they are appealing. Let's come back to downtown Shelby. I told you their outdoor dining is right behind those Arbe vida, what's behind there? Look at this, wow, attractive, appealing, but why isn't it visible? What's next to that? Look at this courtyard, attractive, appealing, but why isn't it visible? That's a question for you to answer. Now, I want to do my part in helping Shelby become a destination, a go-to place, okay? And I think that, I know that we can do that with the outdoor environment that we want to create. Two reasons, one, I have an established clientele, so they're going to keep coming to the restaurant. Number two, the outdoor environment I'm going to create will have the following advantages, it will be unique, it will be attractive, it will be inviting, it will be warm, comfortable, festive, exotic, safe, family-friendly, fun, calming, and when you are there, it will take your mind to a different place, not because of the margaritas, and maybe the margaritas, and it will have great food, okay? Now, let me tell you what we're going to do, and I want to give you a visual, what we're going to do, so you can see what we want to accomplish here. Here's two restaurants, Taco Local on the left, and another restaurant on the right. They are both visible, right, you can see them, but the one on the right, it is more attractive, and it is more appealing. And you see, that's what I want to do at Taco Local, I want to bring, Taco Local, to me, when I see my restaurant, you know what I see? Colors naked, colors and a naked building. Architecture, architecture is a visual art, and buildings speak for themselves, and my building says, "Help, I'm naked, do something," even though it's colorful. So I want to show you what we want to do, and I hope that I can, I can do this without moving to the next screen. So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to take Taco Local sign down, okay? Then, we're going to cut a door right in the middle of those two windows, then we're going to take out all of the bushes in the front, and the sidewalk from here, whoops, see, I went back here, child preview, the first three spaces, so all that sidewalk will be removed, and the bushes will be removed. Then we're going to take an overhang like this, and bring, and build one at Taco Local. So the tullis will be shaped up, and then the tullis will come down. Then, we'll put, we're going to pour stamped concrete all over the front here, and the first three parking spaces. After the overhang is up, the steel overhang with clay, like clay tiles, then, we're going to build something like this, an exact replica, but not with stairs, because it's going to be a single, it's not going to be a raised floor, okay? The opening will be facing the restaurant, and that's about what it's going to look like. It's going to be a little bit higher as far as the opening to go in, because I want people to be able to see inside, the people dining, and I want people dining inside to see outside. So when they go by, they can say, "Wow," okay? Now, the roof is going to be artificial, palm, and I have some, if you want to see it, but here's from the manufacturer, it's portable, we'll see, it's beautiful, natural-looking, fast and easy installation on any roof, so it's going to be a closed roof, then we'll have this artificial palm leaf on top, it's resistant, fire-resistant, resistant to fading, infestations, harsh weather, and winds up to 200 miles per hour, it's durable and non-lasting, and has a 20-year warranty, okay? Now, that's the palapa, that's the overhang, and under the overhang, we're going to have probably a waiting and dining area, we'll see, we'll see how, how things turn out. We'll see how things turn out. But there'll be either dining and/or waiting there. And then, we propose a fence, like this, to go from... Let's see if I can go back here. If I can do this. From here, corner of the building, all around, down through here, and basically around the restaurant, around the parking lot. Now, we propose a fence for two reasons. Number one, a fence detracts from the cars, from the parked cars. It will detract the view of cars. They'll be... If you look for the cars, you'll see them. But if you don't, you're not gonna see the cars. You're gonna see a black fence, you're gonna see a palapa, and a yellow building with a red overhang. That would detract from the view of the cars, number one. Number two, you know, one of the biggest problems I've had is people driving off the sides of Taco Loco. And not because of the margaritas, because they can't see the difference in elevation. If you look, look to the left of this, where that car is, there's a drop there of over two feet. And if you go to the right on De Seco's, there's a drop there about two and a half feet. I've had so many people come, try to get out and go through Hellebuck's, and end up, their car's rocking right there, so they have to call a tow truck. I had one guy over by De Seco's this last year. He was in a truck, and he came out, and he tried to go straight forward, and the truck got stuck. I just happened to be walking out, and I said, "Wait, don't do that." He started flooring it, and the tires were burning in the back, burning rubber. And I said, "Stop, stop, stop, call a tow truck." He got like that to me, and he floored it. The truck jumped up, and the two and a half feet minimum, hit the Seco's parking lot, and I thought, "This fool's gonna kill somebody," and almost hit the car that was parked there, but he slammed the brakes on just in time. Then he tore out of the lot, I don't know what the hell he was mad about, but he was mad, and took off. He could've killed somebody. What if a little kid had been there? Or what if somebody had been sitting in the car, he would've reacted fast enough to hit the brakes? This is why we're proposing a fence. Now, a fence, once again, is going to detract from the parked cars, number one. Number two, it's gonna allow people to see what we're creating. It will give us visibility and beauty, okay? This is why we're proposing a fence. Let's see, what else? There's the fence that we're looking at. Palm trees. I know that your plan said that I would put palm trees in the front there, but I'm not gonna do that. I've studied that, and because of the snowplows coming through, and the salt, the life expectancy of that palm tree is probably gonna be three years. So, I've decided to put two palm trees in specially designed, in special areas, so that the longevity of the palm trees will be good, number one, and they'll be highly visible, and they will not impede traffic. And then, we'll put some trees in the front, some natural trees in the front. So I'm gonna have a combination of two palm trees, and probably two street trees, natural trees, okay? Now, let me show you where I want to... Here's the palm trees. These are artificial palm trees. You can see them at the River Spirit Casino. And I have pictures if you want to see them, hard copies, if you should take a look at. There's one at the Land Shark Bar and Grill. These are artificial palm trees. There's one at Pedro's Mexican Restaurant. So a lot of commercial establishments use these. Now, to go back, look at the... Look at the... What do you call it there? The trunk, the trunk of the tree. This is a coconut palm, so they use real bark from the trunk of a tree to build this trunk, from the trunk of a natural tree, to build this trunk on this artificial tree. And the life expectancy of those is minimum 13 years, but they last 13 to 15 years, okay? Now, I will put two in my parking lot. You can see, this is... The first one's gonna go right here. If you can take a look at this, here where's Taco Loco... That one. Okay. The first one's gonna go... I just won't touch that. In this area here, that's on the corner of, the north corner of Hellebuck. I want... Hellebuck parking lot. A tree there. I went and talked to him the other day, and we went outside, and I showed him what I wanted to do. And he said, "I like where you're going, as long as you're gonna pay for it." So I said, "Okay, I'll pay." So, we're gonna come up with an agreement where I will put a palm tree there, and that will be, you can see, the drop of that palm tree will be the palapa. Okay? You can see different views of that. Now, if you look at the view that's on the right, top right, that will give you a good view. The palm tree's gonna be right in the middle. That's a good area that could be fenced with a black fence that would happen in the parking lot. Fenced around that, but with an opening, and maybe a bench there, a park bench, so somebody's walking down the sidewalk and sit down, have their lunch, or just rest. Take a picture next to the palm tree. This is just me dreaming, okay? That could happen. We'll see, we'll see how money is, okay? But that's an idea there. The next palm tree, we're gonna be putting right... Look at the top, the right picture, right there. That's next to my sign. Now, you see my sign there? Plans are, I'm gonna remove that sign, and put a monument sign there in the future, and the palm tree's gonna be right there. So it'll be beautiful there. And you can see from the street on the other two pictures, they will not obstruct traffic. Those are the two palm trees. I have two natural trees. But I have to be careful, because the other day, I went by VAST, and I looked on the north side of VAST, they've got four trees there, I think. Well, I don't know what kind of trees they are, but trees grow, and they get leaves. And in the summer, as those trees grow and they get leaves, it's gonna block out the beauty of that building. And that's what I don't want to happen at Taco Loco. We have to be visible. Because if we're gonna make downtown Shelby a go-to place, people have to see it. People have to enjoy it.
Still be in the right of way?
No, they won't be in the right of way. They'll be in... They'll be in my parking, in my lot, by my sign. Parking lot. Up with my building.
I'll say, from the front of the building.
Yes, okay?
Not on the south, your south boundary.
Yeah, it'll go down. Palapa's right here. And if you look at from across the street, you'll see the palm tree here, and the palapa right there.
So, but that's gonna be within... How far are the palapa? So it's gonna be a part of the palapa sort of scape?
Excuse me for a second.
How far... So, how far will the two trees be from the palapa?
Okay, there's a picture. Now, if you look at the top picture, that area right there, see the sidewalk? There's a sidewalk. And then you've got, and you can see from the other picture, you can see the street view. It's far off, away from the street. You see it? Look at the top right picture, you see how it's way away from the street. Matter of fact, it's away from the sidewalk. So it's in a safe area. Okay? And I want to make sure I get it away from there for, because of the salt and the slush. So it's in De Seco's parking lot, but it's a curbed area. That's where I want to put one palm tree, okay? And that, right there, the palapa is right in front of it. It's about, once again, I have to measure it.
Hellebuck's property, not De Seco. Okay.
I'm sorry, Hellebuck's property. Correct. So that one's there. And he's agreed to that. He likes it, okay? Then the other one will be in my area, right in front of my sign. And you can see the visual, the first one, you can see how far it is from the street. My sign, so it'll be just in front of the sign there. Look at the right, you can see the grassy area where I'm gonna put it in.
It's not in the right of way?
It's not part of the property. Sign is part of my property. Yeah, it's part of my property.
Yeah.
Sidewalk. Look at the bottom picture.
It's gonna be on the other side of the sidewalk.
There's the sidewalk, see? So inside there, that's my property. Look at the bottom picture. That's the sidewalk, and...
And that's the driveway coming into your property, coming into.
Yeah.
So you want to put that right on, between the sidewalk and... Yeah, I gotta believe that's in the... That's gotta be in the right of way.
Yeah, I don't think they have it dedicated. Do they have it dedicated?
I wouldn't be able to have a sign there if it was...
Oh, but you're putting it in front of it, right? Am I seeing that?
Yeah.
Again, I'm just kinda going on what you're telling me.
Yeah.
So that green space, that looks like next to that little white pole, so in that area there.
Can you see that? Right in front of that green space is the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The right-of-way line, Jerry, if you look in the very first set of prints, where you have the palm trees proposed?
So it's just gonna be just on the inside of that, of the right of way?
Right.
So there, and then...
It's where they originally had it.
And it'll be equidist... It'll be straight across on the Hellebuck's property. 12, what's 14 to 18 foot? You said these are quasi-alive trees? Well, I'm... Listen, something there was...
Put new skin on them.
There's skin?
Put a skin on them.
Yeah, they put skin on them.
So like with a 10 to 15-year life on the skin?
And then I'll have to... They're easily replaceable. I'll have to pop them out, put another one in after 15, whenever they...
Where else do they have them in Michigan?
I haven't researched that. They haven't thought about it. Think about this.
One on 23 Mile Road.
Is that landscaping?
Landscaping. But those are terrible.
It's a small one. Just west of Shaner, on the south side, yeah.
There used to be two on Hall Road at the Palms, the restaurant. The guy, it's tore down now, but there used to be at least six Palms there.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. There was the guy that went to... The guy that's like...
Went to jail.
Yeah, well, he didn't go to jail. He ran, he skipped country.
Went back to Pakistan.
There you go. Or wherever, yeah. Yeah, 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 okay.
I got some pictures here that she can take a look at, to get a good look at this, instead of the stair.
I think I got my hand around it a little bit. Julie, you wanna do your thing? All right. So I'm gonna take Turner to the planner, let her give her report, and then we'll bring it back. I'm sure there are a couple other questions.
So basically, we did a preliminary site plan review on this, and ironed out most of the comments that are in the review comments. There's a few things that he's gonna need a variance for the fence in the front yard setback. Bumper blocks are not allowed, so those are, will have to be removed from the parking lot. The other items that need to be addressed, like I said, the two variances in the front porch. The trees will also need a variance, because our landscape calls for, our landscaping ordinance calls for the trees to be of living material. So he will also need some sort of a recommendation, perhaps from the planning commission, if to go in from the zoning board of appeals, any type of support for the palm trees. Now, as far as the palm trees go, I don't have a problem with them, but I do have a problem with them being on Mr. Hellebuck's property, even though he says it's okay. I think having that type of feature on somebody else's property is probably just a recipe for disaster in the future. I think if we can figure out another location to contain it on your property, I think that would be a great, better idea. Other than that, I believe the materials are great materials. Mr. Baez had brought in the sample of the shingles for the tiki hut. So I get the vibe that he's trying to do, and I really like the materials that he's proposing for the outdoor tiki hut. The parking, based on the addition of the outdoor dining, he meets all the parking requirements for that. So there's no other issues with that. But like I said, I think if we can find a location for his palm trees, if the planning commission is inclined to approve that, I'd rather have it on the site itself and not on Mr. Hellebuck's.
Now, you did throw the gauntlet down to us in the beginning, and said, "Look at these threes, and why aren't they like Birmingham and Royal Oak?" And unfortunately, you hear that a lot. Why isn't Shelby like Royal Oak and Birmingham?
We will be, right? We will be.
Well, Old Woodward...
There we go.
I won't argue any of those points, but I will tell you that Old Woodward's speed limit is 25 miles an hour, and speed limit on Main Street and Royal Oak is 25 miles an hour. So, you know, there's a little different, the speed limit, you know, the posted speed limit on Van Dyke is what, 45? So, reality might be a little bit different. And the speed limit by Miguel's Cantina on Shaner's 50, so. It's a little different sort of experiences. Not that I'm saying that what you're proposing can't work, and that... Not that I'm saying, not saying that what you're proposing can't work, and that, that it appears like it, it would be a lovely addition to the township, but, so. To the board for any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Baez, I really appreciate what you're trying to do here with your restaurant. Looked at these pictures, I'm just going to make a few comments about the palm trees. I'm looking at these pictures, and one of the big things they have in common is palm trees are located by beach and water. So I can imagine, you mentioned how people want to go, "Wow, it's a, you know, restaurant, wow." I can see if they're driving down 45 down Van Dyke at, in the middle of February, and they see palm trees, they're going, "Wow, what are these palm trees doing in Shelby Township?" I'm not quite sold on that idea yet. I like what you're trying to do, but I don't know if putting these there would make more sense, and moving them closer to where they're going to be eating is more of a decorative feature. I'm not quite sold on that yet. I mean, I like what you're doing, I'm generally supportive of everything else, except I'm just not quite sold on the palm trees. Now, we've done some creative things on Van Dyke, including the shipping crate Taco Bell at 23 and Van Dyke. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to creative out-of-the-box thinking. I just, I mean, I got to get a comfort level where, to me, it makes sense to put palm trees in Shelby Township.
Yeah, you know, 14, 18 feet might be a little, little more of a statement than, than something that adds to the aesthetic, you know? And I sort of, I agree at, in a point with, with Mr. Turner that maybe if they're closer and as a part of a, sort of a decorative park, part of the palpa, you know, more so like on the corners that there were, you know, eight to 10, eight to 10 to 12 feet, like right kind of on the corner to sort of anchor it, to draw the attention to that kind of space, that it's a part of that, as opposed to, you know, we're driving, driving down Ordeo Drive, and there's palm trees, and all that, that whole sort of, like, you know, vibe, which, yeah, you know, may work out west, but maybe a little less so in, in Shelby. Other comments or questions from the board? Okay?
Mr. Moffitt, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Along with the board is what they're saying, Mr. Baez, I, I agree with them. Perhaps maybe in that area, where in the corner of the, of the site, next to where the handicap parking spot, maybe there's an opportunity to do something there, which would give it at the corner of the building. And then as far as the one that you're proposing for the palm tree next to your sign, you know, I, I would put it behind the sign and, and not in front of the sign. So keep that in mind if the board is inclined to, to approve something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I make one last comment?
Sure.
I would be willing to move the palm trees closer to the building. I think that's going to give it a big boost, and put them wherever, you know, they're going to attract attention, but yet be where you feel they should be.
So it's going to have to be approved by the, the zoning board of appeals?
Sure.
And so I think maybe, perhaps if, if my, my colleagues here, we could, we could move it forward as a sort of a positive sentiment for the, but that you work out both size and scope and location with planning before you present it to ZBA, and then at that point, you know, we'll, we can advocate for it.
Sounds good.
Is that fair?
Sounds good.
Mr. Turner.
Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve site plan number 21-35 for Noah Baez Taco Loco, located at 52899 Van Dyke, south of 24 Mile Road, west side of Van Dyke, proposing an outdoor dining area, subject to the approval of the required variance and the submission of a revised site plan, addressing all of the department comments.
Second.
Can I make them, an adjustment here?
Sure.
As far as adding the zoning, in the motion maker, please add, subject to the zoning board of appeals for...
That has to be done. Do we...
Regarding the palm?
Offer, offer a, a conditional positive...
Positive recommendation, yes.
A conditional positive recommendation? We get that?
I would put that in.
Does the second agree?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
I can, he's my neighbor, I have to be nice to him. He lives on Hyawat, that's...
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
And the Chair, well, yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So you, you got, you got Pete for free? No samples? Mr. Baez, did you get Pete for free today?
Are you kidding me?
Well, no, he's, he's, he's not going to charge both you and, and Lachirko, is he? What? So the man with the best business model in the township?
Something like that. Yep, he's got his pictures.
All right, so next item is site plan number 16, it's, we've only been dealing with this for six years, eh?
Yep.
16-44, Mike Lachirko, Stony Creek Cove, Phase 3.
Yes, again, Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 24 Mile Road, representing the petitioner, Mr. Lachirko. This is a piece of property that you've seen before more than once. It was originally in front of you, I believe, 2016, 2017. What was approved is generally what's shown here in the turquoise. It's 308 units, almost all 10-unit buildings, but one 8-unit building. Then in 2020, early 2020, we modified a portion of the site there in yellow to provide for a different style unit. I call it the oakwood building unit, which is instead of a 10-unit building with living space below and above in many of the units, it's a, it's more of a traditional townhouse. This revision is to take the balance of the site, which, which, let me say, let me go back here. So we, we left a bunch of the future area in 2020 alone, didn't change it yet because we weren't really clear or firm on, on what was going to happen over there. He is firm now that he wants to convert the rest of the site, the balance of the site, to the same oakwood building style unit. He prefers that unit. He thinks it's better looking, I agree, and it's definitely a functional unit. He, he, he likes it. So I've submitted a site plan, landscape plan, the building plans are the same as, as they were for the last time you saw it. So again, there weren't pretty much any comments on the landscape plan or the building plans. There's a few variances that we're going to need to run through. One of them, we got, uh, there's a conflicting provision in your ordinance that, according to this zoning category R7, the side yard setback is supposed to be the building height. The building height's 22 and 1/2 feet, so we adhere to the, to the zoning ordinance. However, there's also another provision in your ordinance that you're supposed to have 25 feet of green space, green space around each multifamily building. So we designed it at 22 and 1/2, turned it in, you know, shame on me, I don't have every ordinance memorized, but it slipped by me, and I'm like, "Oh, yeah, there is another provision there." And of course, your planning department caught it, as they should. So we have a, a little bit of a detailed work out there. I think, I, I looked at it carefully today. I think most of the, the buildings can be shifted to adhere to the 25. It may be a situation where there's a couple buildings I need to come in, bring into the ZBA for, I would call it building to building, an end-to-end variance, less than 25, but, but more than 22 and 1/2.
So like, you're looking for 18 inches then?
Yeah.
All right.
So, again, I didn't, I didn't think, again, I can shift it in most places, and really I should have, you know? Again, it, it's there, it's an ordinance provision, I don't needlessly ask for variances. So we'll, we'll do what we can to make it adhere, but there'd be some places where it can't. One other feature that I need to mention about this layout is we're adding a breakaway gate, not a breakaway gate, sorry, a swing gate in between this development, the south edge of this development and the north edge of Shelby Park Manor North. Again, that was part of, it's, part of it's just the dissimilar type of clientele. We have an age-restricted senior living, approved for the south, and then we have one of these apartments to the north. There's a strong sort of sentiment that there'd be a lot of cut-through traffic from the north out to Shelby Road. In fact, I heard your planner had already gotten a call or a complaint from someone on Shelby Road across at, at Pierce Drive, saying, "Hey, what about that drive coming right out? What about cut-through traffic?" So again, the, the proposed gate is in your package, it's a, it's definitely not a low-class gate. I think it's about a $60,000 item. They built one other, very similar to it, over in Rochester Hills, for almost an identical situation, where they had, where they were trying to prevent cut-through traffic, but they wanted to make real sure that, that emergency traffic could get through there very quickly and very easily. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have, and I'm just glad the mic's not coughing at me.
Yeah. In terms of the, the elevation and the change in product, I've, I mean, we, we went through this once, so it's, I mean, it, it sort of makes sense. Putting the gate and closing that access to Shelby, I have more of a, more of a concern, just as, and, and I live in that, I live very close to that, that, that area, and so I drive up Shelby, and I take, you know, either go to the park or to go from, you know, from the park off onto 26 Mile. And so you just have a sort of confluence of the, the ramp that goes from northbound Shelby slash the park onto 26 Mile Road at 50 miles an hour to merge into it. You've got somewhat of a blind under the, the bridge over Stony Creek coming up at you at an rough angle for the person that's merging on to think, to see it. And then you've got traffic at that turnaround coming off of 26 Mile to turn into a very short little, uh, D-Sow lane into that, so to force more cars that were there, and both of those, and both of what your client, both of those, Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, all onto 26 Mile Road, just exacerbates a problem that just keeps the growing and growing and growing. And I've witnessed several times, you know, some near accidents of, you know, because you've got, and it's not even distracted, it's just the way, the way it's configured, you know? Now, shame on us for, you know, the, I see the, it's not a nice, easy meander through to get out to Shelby Road.
Right.
If that were a neater and cleaner drive, it probably would make that better for all of those.
Yeah, and I, and I remember the layout when, when I worked on that layout, obviously that Shelby Park Manor North layout is, is one of ours, one of Urban Land Consultants as well. And I remember trying to make it particularly difficult, understanding that we might have cut-through traffic. Actually, it was kind of the opposite. It was like, hey, if we make this a nice, smooth, collector road feel, everybody's going to cut through on Pierce. And we had so many people at that Shelby Park Manor North meeting, you know, that talking, complaining about traffic on Shelby Road, especially when the park was busy, that, that, you know, it wasn't... I, I completely get what you're saying. I'm not sure there's a wonderful solution there, but at this stage, it's like, I was comfortable proposing a gate there, thinking, hey, I'm keeping dissimilar uses apart, I have a feeling that the township's going to get a lot of phone calls from a lot of residents in Shelby Park Manor North when it goes in about a lot of cut-through traffic. And again, it's, you know, it's private road to private road, you could say, it's Mr. Lachirko in both places, and that's true.
Yeah. Why a gate now, though? Because you've, you know, this is probably the fifth or sixth bite at this apple on both, in between the two of them.
I think it's to the stage where he's just now for sure thinking about it. It, it's always been, hey, at some point, I'm going to get there, but now, but now he's like, oh, this is the last piece, I have to make sure it's going to work, so.
Tanner, comments?
So I, I don't have, like Mr. Snyder said, that he's going to require some variances, but for the perimeter and distance between units, as far as the perimeter setbacks, you have the Stony Creek Park to the west, where it's not going to impact anybody. To the south is the, the...
Consumers Power.
The Consumers Power, which is not going to impact anybody as far as variance as being there to the south. The density is reduced in this by one unit. We've approved variances for the site when it was originally submitted, but I think it would be appropriate to revisit these variances and approve it according to the new site plan that's been proposed, so. I know they're also working on the detention ponds in that area as well, so I think it would, it makes sense, and I don't, I don't have a, you know, any issues with the proposal of the, of the new site plan. And like Mr. Snyder said, that gate is a very attractive gate, and then we, we took a look at it. Definitely separating those two uses and the way the road meanders out from the original, you know, from the parcel to the north and south is, is going to probably cause some issues going through those parking lots there, so. I, I get where it makes sense, although we, we like to have the two, you know, points of access. I think it makes sense in this case not to have it. And it's also been approved by the fire marshal.
It, as to the variances, of course, we're not asking for any variances that we didn't already ask before. We're honoring the same, the same variances that we saw at the first thing. I guess another thing to think about is a gate. It's a gate. If, at the end of the day, it's really feel, people really feel strongly like, hey, we shouldn't impede traffic here, just open the gate.
To the board, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, one question on the gate. Mr. Snyder, that's not a breakaway gate. How would you open that? Is that electronic? You just open it?
Yeah, it actually swings both ways, depending on which way the, the emergency vehicle might, might pull up to it. They, they can key them, and I think they are, they're also, have electronic technology. I don't know if it's siren activated. The one in Rochester Hills, I do not think is siren activated, but they could be. But the big thing is, is that opens, it opens either way, depending on, you know, the vehicle, the, the emergency vehicle pull right up to it, jump out, turn the key, which they would presumably have with them, and through they would go.
Okay, thank you.
Presumably have with them? Okay.
There's got to be another way to open those gates when they don't have the key, but they manage that somehow, I don't know.
You've been, you've been working around the government long enough. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve site plan modification 16-44 for Mike Lachirko, Stony Creek Cove, Phase 2, located south of 26 Mile Road, east of Shelby Road, parcel number 23-07-05-200-031, subject to the applicant receiving approval from the zoning board of appeals and submission of a revised site plan, addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support. Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion?
Chairman, it would be Phase 3, my mistake. It says Phase 2 on the motion, but it should be Phase 3.
Okay, let me make that Phase 3.
I concur.
Secretary.
Yep.
Thank you. Any more comments? No? Call the roll, Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
And Chair, well, yes.
Thank you very much.
Next item is under new business, proposed zoning ordinance text amendments.
Thank you, Chairman. As you had seen, I sent those out on Friday to everybody in an email. If you have not gotten them, let me know, and I'll resend them to you. The package is, is quite large, so sometimes it either gets bounced back or elsewhere in your email. So it's just a summary of all the zoning ordinance text amendments that we are planning on making. Most of them is just housekeeping items, minor corrections. Some of them are, you know, items that we've seen at the zoning board of appeals repeatedly, so we are going to rectify those, like I said, sort of like those covered logias in, in the rear yard setbacks, so. We have been discussing these zoning ordinance amendments with our planning consultants, our building department, our attorneys, so these are just an overview. Most of these already been taken care of and discussed. We have three new zoning ordinances proposed, one for beekeeping, food trucks, and artificial turf, so we should have more information on this on December 13th, more finalized copies on those, where we will have the public hearing. And hopefully by January, we'll present these to the board and, and adopt them sometime in February.
Okay. Now, can you post these on the township's website?
Mm-hmm.
So if anyone wants, because it, there will be a public hearing open to...
Yes.
Any and everyone to comment on.
Yes.
Be great.
Absolutely.
Any questions for the planner?
Yes, are you thinking rezoning the Ryan Road activity where we had that issue last time with where it's set up, how it's set up for transportation and multi-transit? We're going to leave it that way?
No, we will not be looking at this site with this, this is just text amendments and not rezonings. That is actually done during the master plan process. Mr. Meredith?
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Is this from the floor? Nobody's here. Mr. Snyder, you got something for us?
Yep, move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1771.26]